Welcome to my AP United States Government and Politics Unit One Review Video. This video will review the full unit in a little over forty minutes. Let's dive in. Unit one is titled Foundations of American Democracy. This unit tells the story of the debates about American democracy that took place between the Articles of Confederation, ratified in seventeen eighty-one, and the United States Constitution, which came into effect in seventeen eighty-nine. These debates primarily took place in the form of public essays written in newspapers in seventeen eighty-seven and seventeen eighty-eight. The essays are known as the Federalist Papers and the Anti-Federalist Essays. The Federalist Papers, written by Alexander Hamilton, James Madison, and John Jay, made the case for a strong national government to help guide and protect the nation. The Anti-Federalist Essays, written by anonymous writers under the pen names Brutus, Cato, and Federal Farmer, didn't trust the idea of a national government and believed it should be weak in order to protect the rights of citizens. Okay, let's pause there for a second. You might be realizing already that there are going to be a lot of ideas and concepts you're going to need to remember. That's why I've made the Four Hour Exam Ready Playbook, a study and review guide that you can complete while watching the video. Grab it through the link in the description and practice what you're learning while watching. All in just four hours. With this guide, it's never too late to prepare for the exam. Now, let's get back to the lesson. The first attempt at a constitution in seventeen eighty-one, called the Articles of Confederation, protected individual rights by ensuring the national government was weak. However, several problems during the seventeen eighties, such as Shay's Rebellion in seventeen eighty-six and seventeen eighty-seven, which we'll talk about in this unit, led to a new set of documents called the United States Constitution, which gave more power to the national government. So, this unit tells the story of the Federalist versus Anti-Federalist debates during this important era when American democracy was forged. With the scene set, let's now dive into our first lesson, where I'll introduce you to the key ideals of democracy. First, we will look at core democratic ideals, then principles of limited government, and finally, the founding documents. Let's start with core democratic ideals. These are the main ideas that shape how the US government works and why it exists. In this section, we will explore four core ideas. First, we'll look at natural rights, then the social contract, followed by popular sovereignty, and finally, limited government. Let's start with natural rights. Natural rights are the basic freedoms and protections that all people are born with. These rights don't come from the government. They exist because you're human. The idea is that no one, not even the government, can take them away. Examples include the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. An example of the right to life is simply that nobody should be allowed to murder you. An example of the right to liberty is that you are free to choose your religion or where you live. An example of the pursuit of happiness is that you have the right to choose what to do with your life, like starting a business or learning an instrument. These rights are the foundation of American democracy. Now, let's talk about the social contract. The AP US Government and Politics Curriculum actually gives us a clear definition of this term. It defines it as "an implicit agreement among the people in a society to give up some freedoms to maintain social order." This is the idea that people agree to form a government and follow its rules, but only if the government protects their rights. People give up a little bit of freedom, like agreeing to follow laws, in exchange for safety and order. Next is popular sovereignty. This means that the people are the source of all government power. In a democracy, the government doesn't rule over the people. The people rule through voting and participation. Elections, public debate, and civic involvement all show how popular sovereignty works in practice. Finally, let's explain limited government. A limited government is one that cannot do whatever it wants. Its powers are restricted by laws like the Constitution, so that it doesn't become too powerful. The next section of this lesson double-clicks on this concept by zooming in on the four principles of limited government. These are the four main ways that the people of the United States are protected from government tyranny. The main ideas are separation of powers, checks and balances, federalism, and republicanism. Let's start with separation of powers. This is the idea that government power should be divided into different branches, like legislative, executive, and judicial, so no one group has all the power. Each branch has its own job and they work separately to keep things balanced. Next is checks and balances. This system allows each branch of government to stop the others from gaining too much power. For example, the president can block a law he doesn't like that was passed by Congress. This is called a presidential veto, but Congress can override that veto if they can get a two-thirds majority of lawmakers to agree. The courts can strike down laws that are unconstitutional. It's like a constant tug-of-war that keeps everything fair. We're going to dive deeper into separation of powers in Lesson one point six, so put a pin in that concept, and we'll get back to it later in the unit. Now, let's look at federalism. Federalism is the idea that power is shared between the national government and the states. Some powers belong to Washington DC, and others belong to state governments. Like separation of powers, federalism is a really big concept in this course that we'll return to several more times. Last in this section is republicanism. This means that people elect representatives to make decisions for them. If we had to vote on every single new law that the government proposes, it would be an expensive and messy process. So, instead, we get together and vote for representatives who then cast a vote on our behalf. This way, citizens only need to cast a vote every few years to elect their representative, who will be the person who votes on every piece of legislation on their behalf. Okay, let's move on to founding documents. These are the texts that explain and protect the ideals we've just discussed. For this specific lesson in AP US Government and Politics, we only need to touch on the Declaration of Independence of seventeen seventy-six and the US Constitution of seventeen eighty-nine. First is the Declaration of Independence. This document was written by Thomas Jefferson with help from John Adams and Benjamin Franklin. It explains why the American colonies wanted to break away from British rule. It says that people have natural rights and that government must protect those rights. If it doesn't, the people can choose new leaders. The document is a clear example of both natural rights and popular sovereignty. Now, let's look at the US Constitution. This was drafted mainly by James Madison during the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia. George Washington led the meeting, and Alexander Hamilton and others on the grand committee played important roles. The Constitution sets up the structure of the US government and puts the social contract into action. It limits government power and protects the people. This document is still used today as the blueprint for American democracy. Okay, that brings us to the end of Topic one point one. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're using the Four Hour Exam Ready Playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key. If you're using the FRQ Mastery Playbook, this lesson's free response practice question will prepare you for an exam-style question about the ideals of democracy. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic one point two. In this lesson, we will explore the different types of democracy. First, we will look at participatory democracy, then pluralist democracy, then elite democracy. After that, we will examine the constitutional debates that shaped these ideas, including Federalist number ten and Brutus number one. Let's start with participatory democracy. Participatory democracy is a model of democracy that puts power directly in the hands of the people. It emphasizes widespread involvement in political decision-making, whether through voting, attending public meetings, or being active in civil society groups. The goal is to make sure that the government reflects the will of as many people as possible, not just a few powerful voices. Okay, let's move on to pluralist democracy. Pluralist democracy is a model where political power is mainly held by many different groups who compete to influence government policy. These groups might include labor unions, pro-business associations, professional groups like doctors' associations, and social movements like environmentalist groups. Instead of individuals acting alone, people come together in organized groups to push for change. This model sees politics as a contest among groups, where no one group dominates all the time, and compromise is necessary. Now, let's move on to elite democracy. Elite democracy is a model where a small number of people, usually wealthy, educated, or influential, hold most of the power in politics. While everyone technically has a voice, real political decisions are often made by a few who are seen as having the expertise or resources to lead. This model assumes that too much popular involvement can make government unstable or inefficient, so decisions should be filtered through capable leaders. Now, let's look at constitutional debates. Let's start with Federalist number ten. Federalist number ten was written by James Madison. He argued in favor of a large republic with many different groups and interests. Madison believed that pluralism, many competing groups, was the best way to prevent any one group from gaining too much power. He supported a system where the voices of the people were heard, but filtered through elected representatives. Now, let's look at Brutus number one. Brutus number one was written by an anti-federalist who worried that a strong central government would take power away from the people. He supported more direct participation in government and warned that a large republic would lead to elite control. Brutus preferred local decision-making and feared that the new constitution would make it too hard for ordinary citizens to influence their leaders. Today, you can still see all three models of democracy in US politics. Town hall meetings and voter initiatives are examples of participatory democracy. Lobbying and interest groups like the NRA or environmental groups show how pluralist democracy works. And elite democracy is visible when wealthy donors or political insiders have a bigger influence on elections and policymaking than the average voter. Okay, that brings us to the end of Topic one point two. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key. If you're using the FRQ Mastery Playbook, you can also complete this lesson's free response practice question to get experience with exam-style questions about this topic before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic one point three. In this lesson, we will explore Federalist and Anti-Federalist beliefs. First, we will look at Federalist beliefs, then Anti-Federalist beliefs, and finally, we'll compare the key differences between the two. Let's start with Federalist beliefs. The Federalists believed that a strong central government was necessary to keep the country stable and united. The Federalists had a problem with the Articles of Confederation of seventeen eighty-one, which, as we learned earlier in this unit, were the first attempt at a US constitution. The Federalists thought those articles were too weak and didn't give the national government enough power to do things like build a strong national army and control trade between states. Federalists supported giving more authority to a national government that could act on behalf of all the states. They also believed in a system where power would still be shared with the states, but the national government would have the final say in most matters. They trusted that checks and balances would stop any one branch from becoming too powerful. Okay, let's move on to Anti-Federalist beliefs. The Anti-Federalists were worried that a strong national government would take away people's freedoms. They believed the Constitution gave too much power to leaders who were far from ordinary citizens. Instead, they wanted power to stay mostly with the states, where it would be closer to the people. They believed small governments were better at protecting individual rights. They also felt that the Constitution needed a Bill of Rights to clearly protect people's freedoms from being violated by the government. We'll have a whole lesson on this Bill of Rights in Unit Three. Okay, so let's sum up the key differences between federalism and anti-federalism to finish up this lesson. Federalists and anti-federalists had different views about how power should be shared in the new government. Federalists trusted a stronger national government, while anti-federalists wanted most of the power to stay with the states. Federalists focused on national unity and solving big-picture problems, while anti-federalists focused on keeping government personal and protecting individual freedom. This debate between Federalists and Anti-Federalists came to a head during the ratification of the new US Constitution. In writings such as Federalist number ten, the Federalists supported a new constitution which would give more powers to the national government. In writings such as Brutus number one, the Anti-Federalists opposed the new proposed constitution, because they felt it gave too much power to the national government. We'll learn later in this course that a compromise was achieved through the introduction of a Bill of Rights, which was designed to please the Anti-Federalist groups. Okay, that brings us to the end of this lesson on federalism versus anti-federalism, so complete this lesson's section of the study guide before moving on. There's a free response activity for this lesson for those of you who are also following the FRQ Mastery Playbook. And once you've checked your answers, we can move on to the next lesson, which zooms in on some of the issues with the Articles of Confederation that led the Federalists to believe they were too weak and a new constitution with a stronger national government was necessary. First, we will look at five key weaknesses of the Articles of Confederation, then Shay's Rebellion, which was an uprising that demonstrated a key weakness of the Articles. Let's start with the Articles' key weaknesses. The Articles of Confederation created a weak central government with very limited powers. The states held most of the power, and this caused serious problems. Let's go through the specific areas where the Articles were weak. First, we will look at military power, then executive power, then judicial power, then interstate commerce, and finally, currency control. Let's start with military power. Under the Articles of Confederation, the national government did not have the power to raise and maintain a standing army. This became a problem when rebellions or conflicts happened, because there was no central force ready to respond quickly. Instead, the government had to ask the states to send troops, which was slow and unreliable. Okay, let's move on to executive power. The Articles did not create an executive branch. There was no president or national leader who could enforce the laws passed by Congress. That meant even if Congress passed a law, there was no one to make sure people followed it. For example, the national government couldn't collect taxes unless states agreed to cooperate, and many didn't. Next is judicial power. There was no national court system under the Articles. That meant if states had conflicts with each other, or if there were legal problems across state lines, there was no official place to resolve those issues. This made the law feel inconsistent and weak across the country. Now, let's look at interstate commerce. The national government didn't have the power to regulate trade between the states. Each state could set its own rules, taxes, and regulations for trading with other states. This made trade confusing and unfair, and it hurt the national economy. Finally, let's talk about currency control. Under the Articles, the national government couldn't be the only one to print money. States printed their own currencies, which led to confusion and inflation. A dollar from one state might not be accepted in another, and this made it hard to do business across state lines. Okay, let's move on to Shay's Rebellion. This event showed how dangerous the Articles' weaknesses could be. In seventeen eighty-six, farmers in Massachusetts, led by Daniel Shay's, were angry about high taxes and losing their farms. They formed a militia and tried to take over a federal arsenal. The national government couldn't stop them because it had no army. Eventually, a private state militia put down the rebellion, but it scared many leaders. They realized the country needed a stronger central government to keep order and protect rights. Okay, that brings us to the end of Challenges of the Articles of Confederation. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic one point five. In this lesson, we will explore the ratification of the US Constitution, which refers to the political negotiations that helped secure support for the new stronger Constitution. First, we will look at foundational compromises, which were key deals made to get different groups to agree on the Constitution. Then, we will turn to the amendment process, which was added to allow future changes to the document. After that, we'll look at unresolved issues and ongoing debates, which refer to issues that were left unclear during ratification and still spark debate today. Let's start with foundational compromises, which were made between delegates at the Constitutional Convention to win enough support for ratification. These compromises solved major disagreements between large and small states, northern and southern states, and those for or against a strong central government. There are five major foundational compromises we'll look at. First, we'll look at the Great Compromise, which resolved the issue of representation. Then, we'll cover the Electoral College, which created a system for choosing the president. After that, we'll look at the Three-Fifths Compromise, which dealt with counting enslaved people. Then, we'll examine the decision to delay a ban on the slave trade. Finally, we'll look at the agreement to add a Bill of Rights, which helped gain support from Anti-Federalists. The Great Compromise solved a major argument between large and small states. Large states wanted representation in national Congress based on population. This meant that a state with a larger population would get more votes than a state with a smaller population. Small states argued every state should have the same amount of votes, no matter what their population was, so every state would have the same power. The compromise created a dual, or bicameral, system of congressional representation, meaning it contains two parts. These two parts are the House of Representatives, where larger states would have more votes than smaller states, and the Senate, where every state has two votes. This plan balanced the interests of both large and small states. The Electoral College was another compromise about how to choose the president. Some delegates thought the lawmakers in Congress should vote to pick the president. Others believed that all citizens should vote for the president directly. The compromise was that each state would have a certain number of people who choose a president, called electors. These electors would vote for the president. Each state gets as many electors as they have congresspeople. For example, California might have fifty-two members of the House of Representatives, chosen by population size, plus two senators, so they would get fifty-four electors. North Dakota might have one member of the House of Representatives, but also two senators, so they would get three electors. So, for example, California might have fifty-four electors who can cast a vote for president, and North Dakota might have three. So, when a citizen goes to vote for president, they're not actually voting directly for president. They're voting to tell their state electors who they should vote for, and then the electors will go ahead and vote for president on their state's behalf. This is a roundabout way to select a president, but it's all about making a compromise that everyone was happy with when the Constitution was written. Next, we have the Three-Fifths Compromise. This dealt with how enslaved people would be counted for both representation and taxes. Southern states wanted to count enslaved people fully when deciding how many representatives they would get in the federal Congress, because that would give them more political power. But they did not want to count enslaved people when figuring out taxes, because that would mean paying more money to the federal government. Northern states argued that the South could not have it both ways. The compromise was that three out of every five enslaved people would count toward both population and taxes. The slave trade compromise was another deal about slavery. Some delegates wanted to ban the importation of enslaved people right away, but southern states wanted to continue the slave trade because their farms and economies depended on slave labor. The compromise allowed the slave trade to continue until eighteen oh eight, meaning the national government could not stop it before then. This gave the South twenty more years to keep importing enslaved people. The final major compromise was the promise to add a Bill of Rights to the Constitution. The Anti-Federalists were worried that the new national government would have too much power and might take away people's freedoms. The Federalists, who supported the Constitution, agreed to add a list of basic rights to protect individual liberty. The Bill of Rights is the first ten amendments to the Constitution. It includes core freedoms such as freedom of speech, religion, and the right to a fair trial. We'll talk a lot more about this in Unit Three, but for this lesson, you need to know that promising to add this Bill of Rights into the Constitution helped win over enough states to approve the Constitution. Okay, let's move on to the amendment process. An amendment is an official change or addition to the Constitution. The founding fathers included a way to make changes because they knew the Constitution might need to adapt over time. This showed that the document was flexible, not fixed forever. The amendment process is described in Article Five of the Constitution. It allows two ways to propose an amendment. One way is for two-thirds of both Houses of Congress to agree on the change. The other way is for two-thirds of the states to call a special convention to propose it. After an amendment is proposed, it must be approved by three-fourths of the states to become part of the Constitution. This process is difficult on purpose. It ensures that only changes with broad support are added. Finally, let's look at unresolved issues and ongoing debates. These are issues that tie back to the same core questions from the ratification period. How much power should the national government have, and how should individual rights be protected? One example is government surveillance. After the nine-eleven attacks, the federal government increased its ability to monitor citizens to protect national security. Some people who don't trust big government have argued that this violates privacy rights, while others say federal government surveillance is necessary for safety. This debate echoes earlier concerns about limiting government power. Another ongoing debate is the federal government's role in public education. The Constitution never directly mentions education, so the power to control schools is usually left to the states. However, some people argue that the national government should play a stronger role to make sure all students, no matter where they live, have equal access to quality education. For example, in nineteen fifty-four, the Supreme Court case Brown versus Board of Education forced states to end racial segregation in schools. That decision showed how the federal government can step in when it believes states failed to protect students' constitutional rights. We'll dig deeper into how these ongoing federalism debates and unresolved issues from the Constitution are dealt with in Lesson one point seven during our discussion about reserved powers. Okay, that brings us to the end of this section on ratification of the US Constitution. On the screen now are all the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response practice questions, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic one point six. In this lesson, we will explore the principles of American government, which describe how power is divided and balanced across the branches of the US government to protect freedom and accountability. First, we will look at separation of powers, which explains how different jobs are given to each branch of government to keep them from becoming too powerful. Then, we'll move on to checks and balances, which shows how each branch can limit the power of the others. Finally, we'll explore purpose and impact, which helps us understand why these systems exist. Let's start with separation of powers, which helps us understand how each branch of government has its own unique role, so no single group controls everything. Separation of powers means that the Constitution gives specific jobs to each of the three branches. The legislative branch, or Congress, writes the laws. The executive branch, led by the president, enforces the laws. And the judicial branch, or the courts, interprets the laws and decides if they are constitutional. First, we will look at legislative power, which is held by Congress. Congress has the power to pass laws, approve budgets, declare war, and oversee the executive branch. Then comes executive power, which is held by the president and the executive branch. The president enforces laws, manages the military, makes foreign policy decisions, and can veto bills passed by Congress. By the way, as a reminder, the term veto refers to when the president decides to reject a bill that Congress has passed by refusing to sign it into law. For example, in two thousand fifteen, the Congress passed a bill that would have approved an oil pipeline from Canada down to the United States, but President Obama vetoed it because he believed it was bad for the environment. Next is judicial power, which is held by the federal court system. Judges and justices interpret laws and review cases to make sure laws follow the Constitution. This allows them to strike down laws or actions that violate constitutional rights. One famous example that we touched on earlier in this unit was Brown versus Board of Education, where the Supreme Court declared that laws in several states that required racial segregation in schools were unconstitutional. Okay, let's move on to checks and balances. Checks and balances is the idea that each branch has the power to stop or influence the actions of the other branches. This prevents one branch from acting alone or gaining too much power. First, we'll look at how each branch checks others, then we'll look at the process of impeachment and removal. Let's start with how branches check one another. Here are some examples. As noted a few moments ago, the president can veto bills passed by fifty percent of the Congress. The president can also nominate federal judges. This is a check on the Congress. But Congress can also override a presidential veto if they can get two-thirds of the congresspeople to vote for it. The Senate, which is one of the branches of Congress, must also approve or reject the judges that the president has nominated, which acts as a check on the president's power to select judges. Meanwhile, the courts can declare that laws passed by Congress or executive actions made by the president are unconstitutional, as outlined in the Brown versus Board of Education example earlier in this lesson. All these powers to check other branches of government are meant to slow things down, so decisions aren't rushed and power isn't abused. Now, let's explore the role of impeachment and removal. If someone in government abuses power or breaks the law, the House of Representatives can impeach them. That means officially charging them with misconduct. If that happens, the Senate holds a trial and can vote to remove the person from office if they're found guilty. This is a powerful way to keep officials in check. One example from history is President Andrew Johnson, who was impeached in eighteen sixty-eight because he illegally fired the Secretary of War without Senate approval. The House of Representatives successfully impeached him, but the Senate didn't end up having the two-thirds vote necessary to remove him from office. Now, let's turn to purpose and impact, which helps explain why the framers of the Constitution built the system this way. The AP US Government and Politics Curriculum requires you know two key reasons for separation of powers and checks and balances. These are: preventing tyranny and encouraging public influence. First, we'll talk about preventing tyranny. Federalist number fifty-one explains that dividing power makes it harder for any one group or person to take over or dominate the government. The goal was to protect liberty by making sure government worked slowly and thoughtfully. The goal was to protect liberty by making sure government worked slowly and thoughtfully with many voices involved. Next is encouraging public influence. Because powers are divided and balanced, many different people in institutions like interest groups, voters, and state governments have ways to influence what the federal government does. For example, a voter can contact people in the executive branch, their local representative in the House, and their state senator on the same issue so they can try to influence many different people in government, not just one all-powerful leader. These are called access points. That's why, even though it can seem like government is slow or complicated, that's actually part of the design to allow more input and prevent abuse. Okay, that brings us to the end of Principles of American Government. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic One Point Seven. In this lesson, we will explore how power is divided and shared between federal and state governments. First, we will look at federalism, which explains how government authority is structured across federal and state governments. Then we'll examine the different types of powers governments yield. And finally, we'll explore how the national government influences state actions through funding and mandates. Let's start with federalism. Federalism is the system of government in which power is divided between the national and state governments. Note that this isn't the same as the federalists, who were people in support of a strong federal government. Rather, federalism is the broader system of government, where the federal and state governments divide power. So, in federalism, there isn't just one central government. Instead, there are state governments, and a federal government working together, and sometimes in tension. For example, after Hurricane Katrina, both the federal and state governments had to respond, highlighting the importance of cooperation between the levels of government. This may also lead to conflict, such as when a state governor gets frustrated that the federal government doesn't release funds to the state quickly enough during a disaster. One way the Constitution prevents too much conflict is by distributing different types of powers to different levels of government. There are three main types of power distributed to state and national governments: exclusive powers, reserved powers, and concurrent powers. Let's start with exclusive powers. These are the powers that only the national government has. Exclusive powers are divided into two subtypes: enumerated powers and implied powers. Enumerated powers are powers clearly written in the Constitution. Examples include the power to make money and the power to declare war. The Constitution clearly states that these powers are specifically for the federal government alone. There are also implied powers. These are not directly written in the Constitution, but it makes sense for them to be powers exclusively for the federal Congress. There is a section in the Constitution called the Necessary and Proper Clause, which says the federal Congress can make any laws that are necessary and proper to carry out its enumerated powers. For example, the Constitution explicitly says, "Federal Congress can make money and collect taxes." So it is implied that the federal Congress should also have the power to create a bank, because this is necessary if the Congress wants to make money and collect taxes. So, in this situation, making money is an enumerated power while creating a national government bank is an implied power. Next are reserved powers, which are powers kept by the states. A provision written into the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution states that any powers that are not listed in the Constitution for the national government automatically go to the states. Examples of reserved powers include issuing driver's licenses and running local schools. Now let's look at concurrent powers. These are powers shared by both the national and state governments. For example, both levels of government can collect taxes and build roads. Even when the national government doesn't have direct power over state governments, they have found ways to influence the states, often by giving or withholding money. Four ways that national governments influence states that you need to know about for this AP course are: revenue sharing, block grants, categorical grants, and federal mandates. First, revenue sharing was a system where the national government gave money to the states with almost no rules on how to use it. It gave states the most freedom but has used the least today. Next, block grants are funds from the national government that come with only a few restrictions, such as the restriction that the money must be used for education or public health. States prefer these because they can decide how to use the money in a way that best serves their local communities. Categorical grants are the most common and come with many rules about how the money must be spent. The National Minimum Drinking Age Act of nineteen eighty-four is an example. The federal government used highway funding as leverage, telling states they had to raise the drinking age to twenty-one or risk losing funds to build highways. The national government prefers categorical grants because they keep control over how the money is used. Finally, federal mandates are requirements that the national government puts on states. Sometimes these come with money to help meet the requirement, but sometimes they don't. An example is the Americans with Disabilities Act, which required states to make public spaces accessible but didn't always provide funding. Okay, that brings us to the end of relationship between the states and national government. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and FRQ Mastery Playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic One Point Eight. In the previous lesson, we explored how the Constitution distributes power between the state and federal governments. However, oftentimes the Constitution isn't perfectly clear, so judges have to make an interpretation. Sometimes courts give more power to the national government, and sometimes they give more power to the states. In this lesson, the key idea you need to remember is this. The balance of power between national and state governments has changed over time based on interpretations of the Supreme Court of the United States. The AP curriculum requires that you know about four sections of the Constitution that have been interpreted differently by the courts at different times. These are the Fourteenth Amendment clauses, the Commerce Clause, the Necessary and Proper Clause, and the Supremacy Clause. Let's start with the Fourteenth Amendment clauses. The Fourteenth Amendment has two important parts: the due process clause and the equal protection clause. The due process clause says that government must follow fair legal steps, such as through a court trial before taking away someone's life, liberty, or property. Early on, the court ruled that due process only applied to the federal government. However, starting in the nineteen sixties, the court used this clause to say states also need to ensure due process. This shift gave the national government much more power to force states to protect individual rights. Now let's look at the equal protection clause. This clause says that states must treat all people equally under the law. In Plessy versus Ferguson, the court interpreted this narrowly, ruling that separate but equal was constitutional, and giving states broad power to segregate students based on race. But in Brown versus Board of Education, the court reversed course, interpreting the clause broadly to strike down racial segregation in schools and expanding federal power to challenge discriminatory state laws. Okay, let's move on to the Commerce Clause. The Commerce Clause gives Congress the power to regulate trade between the states. During the nineteen thirties and nineteen forties, the court interpreted this broadly, ruling that even a farmer growing wheat for his own use could be regulated because it affected interstate commerce, dramatically expanding federal power. However, in the nineteen nineties, the court pulled back, ruling that some local economic activities were too local for Congress to regulate under the Commerce Clause. Okay, now let's move on to the Necessary and Proper Clause. The Necessary and Proper Clause says that Congress can make any laws that are needed to carry out its enumerated powers. In McCulloch versus Maryland, this clause was interpreted broadly, saying necessary means convenient or useful, not absolutely required. This allowed Congress to create a national bank and expanded the federal government's power to force states to follow federal rules. However, in more recent cases, the court interpreted the clause more narrowly, limiting federal power by ruling that Congress couldn't force state officials to enforce federal regulations. Now let's turn to the Supremacy Clause. The supremacy clause says the United States Constitution and federal laws are the highest laws in the country. If a state law and a federal law conflict, the federal law wins. But at the same time, some federal laws are written that infringe on states' reserved powers. Different Supreme Courts, made up of different justices and time periods, can see that balance differently. Some courts believe the federal government should have broad power to create national rules. Other courts uphold the rights of states to exercise reserved powers. These shifting views lead to different rulings about when a federal law truly overrides a state law. Okay, that brings us to the end of this lesson on constitutional interpretations of federalism. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. For this lesson's free response mastery playbook activity, you'll get a chance to look at a Supreme Court comparison question that deals with issues of federalism. This one's hard, but it'll prepare you for what you can expect in the exam. Don't forget you can also watch my Supreme Court cases video on this channel to get an in-depth look at how to master the compulsory Supreme Court free response task. And when you're ready, we'll move on to Topic One Point Nine. Throughout this unit, we have discussed the rules of federalism that were placed in the Constitution. In this lesson, we'll look at the consequences for real-life policymaking. First, we will look at how federalism has created multiple access points for individuals and groups to influence power. Then, we will look at how the national government sometimes faces limits when trying to implement policies due to the sharing of concurrent powers with state governments. Let's start with the concept of multiple access points. We briefly touched on this earlier in this unit when exploring how the federal government has three branches of government. Similarly, because there are multiple levels of government, in particular state and national governments, people have multiple different ways they can interact with lawmakers. For example, at the state level, individuals and groups can try to change policy by working with state legislatures, governors, and courts. For example, if a group wants to reform voting laws, it might lobby state lawmakers, write a letter to the governor, or file a lawsuit in a state court to challenge existing rules. The same is possible at the federal level, which expands people's access points to lawmakers even more. Individuals and groups can speak to members of the federal Congress, meet with federal executive agencies, or even try to influence the president through public campaigns or lobbying efforts. Thirdly, people and groups can employ a dual strategy, meaning they can attempt to influence people or organizations at both state and federal levels at the same time. For example, a national civil rights group might push the federal Congress to pass a law while also supporting legal challenges in individual states. Okay, let's move on to constraints on national power. I'll be brief here because I think we've covered most of this pretty thoroughly already in this unit. But this lesson of the course specifically requires that you know that federalism constrains policymaking when there are concurrent powers, meaning when both state and federal governments can pass laws on the same issue. This causes conflicts because states may disagree with federal laws and pass laws to block their implementation. This usually leads to lengthy legal battles and delays. States may also refuse to enforce federal laws. For example, the federal government might set a national standard for environmental protection, but if a state doesn't prioritize enforcement, the policy's effect is limited on the ground. Essentially, what you need to know here is that state and federal governments can get in the way of each other's policy agendas. And sometimes this is even intentional if the state and federal governments disagree on an issue. Okay, that brings us to the end of this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response questions mastery playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key. This also marks the end of Unit One, so when you're ready, we'll dive straight into Unit Two.